Bella Jenkins to lead us in both, please stand.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insights, and we welcome your presence among us. Guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us to seek what is best for all involved. We trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will. In James 1:5 it says, "If any of you lack wisdom, let him ask God, who gives generously to all without reapproach, and it will be given him." We claim this promise as we start our meeting and trust in your provision. We pray for our mayor, Brenda Gunter, this council, our first responders, and this city. May the strength of God sustain us; may the power of God preserve us; may the hands of God protect us; may the way of God direct us; may the love of God go with us this day and forever. The Lord bless us and keep us. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We will move into the public comment section of the agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the D O S, begin by stating their name and address, or single member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Heather, do we have people here to offer public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
First, Mike Burnett.
Morning, council. Mike Burnett, District One, representing Concho Valley Homeless Planning Coalition and Concho Valley Community Action Agency. Here today to discuss an issue that affects our community deeply, hunger and homelessness. This week, we join other communities observing Hunger and Homelessness Week across the country. It is crucial to reflect on the challenges faced by our most vulnerable neighbors and to consider the actions we can take to support them. Every day, countless individuals in our communities struggle to find their next meal and a safe place to eat and sleep. These are not just statistics; they are our friends, family members, and fellow citizens. The causes of hunger and homelessness are complex, ranging from economic hardship and job loss to mental health issues and lack of affordable housing. However, the solutions require a collective effort from us all. First, we must acknowledge the importance of accessible and affordable housing. Safe and stable housing is a fundamental human right, and it is the foundation upon which individuals can build better lives. We need to invest in affordable housing projects and support policies that prevent evictions and foreclosures. By doing so, we can provide a safety net for those at risk of losing their homes. Second, we must address food insecurity. No one in our communities should go hungry. We can support our local food bank, the Concho Valley Regional Food Bank, community kitchens and meal programs that provide nutritious food to those in need. Additionally, we should promote initiatives that reduce food waste and ensure surplus food reaches those who need it the most. Third, we must offer comprehensive support services. Many individuals in need face challenges such as mental illness, addiction, and unemployment. By providing access to healthcare, counseling, job training, and education, we can help them regain stability and independence. I'm glad that the coalition works in great collaboration from our nonprofit organization, businesses, and local government to create a network of support. The City of San Angelo has been a huge partner in our work with those in need. Finally, we must foster within our communities a culture of compassion and understanding. It is easy to overlook the struggles of those who are homeless or hungry, but we must remember that they are part of our community. By raising awareness and encouraging volunteerism and philanthropy, we can create a more inclusive and supportive environment for everyone. We have several events scheduled this week. If you go to cvca.org/HHWeek, you can see the schedule. I'm glad that in the Concho Valley and in San Angelo, we have a coordinated effort and a partnership to address hunger and homelessness. It requires a multifaceted approach and a commitment from all of us. Let us use this week as a catalyst for change, to renew our efforts and to work together towards a future where everyone has a place to call home and enough to eat. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Is that working because the green button didn't come on when he first started talking? Is that working or not?
Yes.
Okay. Next public comment.
Sarah with CVCA.
Good morning. Sarah Negavadich, 3310 Cumberland. You just heard from my colleague, Mike, about Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week and the events that we have coming up. And so I'm going to tag on him and share with you a little bit more information about the events. The very first one is an opportunity for members of the city to get involved and, so to speak, get their hands a little dirty today, is our Monthly Navigation Day. It's the day where members of our community come, over dozens of organizations, come to one location where they are providing hands-on services. So it's not pamphlets and handouts. It's seeing the doctor. It's getting hygiene items. It's ordering a birth certificate. It's having an STD test done. They're getting hands-on services. We've found in the recent months that, not a majority, but about half of the folks that are coming are actually not homeless. They're just right there on the verge. They're one or two missed paychecks away from being in that same situation. And we're so excited to be able to serve all the members of our community. So if that's something that interests you, we encourage you to come out today at First Presbyterian Church on Irving Street. The event is from nine to three, and we are always needing extra helping hands. Following that, on Thursday, we have a duo lineup of events. Thursday morning from nine to 11:30, at St. Paul Presbyterian, we'll be hosting our 2024 Homeless Symposium. We'll hear from members of our homeless community and those who have been able to exit homelessness to share their insights and help all of us to better understand how we can serve our neighbors. Then that evening, we have the Long Walk Home Vigil. At six o'clock on the steps of City Hall, we'll be honoring members of our community who have lost their lives while suffering from homelessness. If you're interested in ways that you can give back, we have two great opportunities. On Friday, November 22nd, all day, you can enjoy a tasty meal at Panda Express, and a portion of those proceeds will go to CVCA and Concho Valley Regional Food Bank. Additionally, at both locations, we have our Grub, Suds, and Buds Drive. We are collecting hygiene items, human food, and pet food to be able to help members of our community who just need a little bit of help. So you can go to either the CVCA offices on West Concho or the Concho Valley Regional Food Bank offices on Hill Street and make your donations there. If you're at all interested in ways that you can help our homeless community, our hungry community, I encourage you to reach out to one of those two organizations, or any organization that you're close to, and ask, "How can I be a part of the solution here?" Because as Mike said, it really does take the entire community, and when we work together, we do amazing things together. Thank you.
Brent Jenkins.
Good morning. My name is Brent Jenkins. I'm the executive director of the Concho Valley Regional Food Bank. We've been serving our community in 13 counties for more than 40 years. If you've never been to the food bank, we invite you to join us, come visit with us at 1313 South Hill Street. We're just south of the Mayfield Paper Company. Hunger and food insecurity is at the intersection of many social issues facing our area, domestic violence, child abuse, school readiness, and mental health, just to name a few. Currently, Tom Green County, excuse me. Currently, Tom Green County faces a 15.7% food insecurity rate, which translates to approximately 15,000 of our area neighbors. Concho Valley Food Bank addresses these on several fronts. We provide food to pantries and food distribution sites that operate daily, weekly, and monthly. More than 30 of these sites are operating right here in Tom Green County. We operate a weekly veggie van program, which travels to all 13 counties of our service area to provide fresh produce to our neighbors that need. We know that food insecurity is crucial to the child's school readiness, and we offer our snack pack program so that students are able to depend on having something to eat over the weekends when they're not in school. With the heroic volunteer help of our local volunteers, we distribute 800 to 1,100 such food packs each week. Since the best way to fight hunger is when neighbors help feed neighbors, Concho Valley Regional Food Bank operates their own food distributions at senior centers and at Howard College each and every month. For some who are getting food as a barrier due to time or to transportation or other issues, Concho Valley Regional Food Bank, San Angelo's local food bank, offers emergency boxes in partnership with agencies such as the Concho Valley Community Action Agency. Whether the future holds, we know that food will be part of it. Our staff continues to identify ways on how we can address the need for food to our neighbors. We've learned that having online access and delivery services would dramatically improve the outcomes of those who are food insecure. In the coming year, we'll be rolling out an online pantry system. This system is geared initially towards high school and college students, but then increasing into our rural areas. And I want to emphasize that other food programs, this other food programs in the future, are not to replace the support that we have currently for our community partner agencies, only in addition to. We believe now, as we always have, that communities help communities, and local feeds local. Thank you.
Charlotte Anderson.
Good morning. Charlotte Anderson, keeps in Angelo, beautiful executive director. I received a little package in the mail, and I thought I would share it with you today. It comes from the State of Texas Alliance for Recycling, and it's from their board, President Board Adrian Hernandez. And it reads, "Councilman Thomas, the impact that KSAB makes in our amazing home state are a testament to your leadership on city council. Thank you for all that you do to help advance recycling in Texas. We hope to see you at the next year's TILA, and that's the Texas Excellence Leadership Awards Ceremony to celebrate your next big achievement. Sincerely, Adrian." So I know this is in the mail, and I'm unpacking, but I have an award for Harry today. That's really beautiful. So you get your very own special award for elected official. And it says, "2024 Regional Superstar, All-Star Elected Official" for Harry Thomas, Councilman, City of San Angelo.
Brian or Laurel, are you here so you could take a picture of Harry receiving this award from Charlotte? If you could please come out and get a picture, I would appreciate it.
KSAB is also wrapping up our America Recycles Week art contest, so we'll have some very excited students who will be awarded laptops for first place. Here's the letter, Harry. For our elementary, middle school, and high school students, second place gets tablets. So we're really excited at that. We worked with our libraries this year, so we have publications at the West Branch and the North Branch. So we'll be congratulating our winners tomorrow. Thank you.
Renee Lacy.
Good morning, council. Single member, District Three. I'm going to talk a little fast because I have a few things I wanted to go over since the last meeting. I was concerned about the weather emergency planning in the city since there's been a lot of wildfires, fires, flash floodings, floodings, and then, of course, the snowmageddon that happened a few years ago. I'm just concerned, are our leaders of the city and our response team prepared for anything to happen? I mean, for example, the rescue that happened in Grape Creek. And then in Spain, there's a lot of weird stuff going on all over the place. They got 18 inches of rain in one night, and that's what they usually get in an entire year. So I'm like, wow, we need to be prepared for natural disasters because Mother Earth is intense. So I'm just concerned that our city is prepared for anything like that that comes our way. So I wanted to bring that up to you guys. The next thing, real quick, was Mr. Jeremy Bartz with Destination Marketing for Discover San Angelo. He had spoken at the last meeting about becoming a destination town for events and using downtown to bring people to San Angelo and increase marketing, increase sales for local and small businesses. So I had talked to somebody, and they were like, "Oh, we're going to go to this small town because it's a small Christmas town." And I had been traveling a lot recently, and I've been noticing there's a lot of towns that have very interesting downtowns. We are known to be a cowboy town. So I'm like, well, why don't we brand our city downtown like a Christmas cowboy town or something? We've already done so much to improve San Angelo. Why stop there? So the next thing that brings me to is we had spoken, item I on the last meeting, about two interstates passing through the town. So my concern is like, wow, are we ready for that? I know it's got a few years for that to come up and really impact us and whatnot, but it's like our streets, our sidewalks, we have heavy foot traffic on particular parts in San Angelo and crosswalks. I see that there's a lot of frequent flyers in jail, and I see a lot of the traffic safety. People don't know that there's rules or laws with bike riding, and they don't know about what way you're supposed to walk on the side of the street for jaywalking, and you can go to jail for that. So it's like, I think there's a big incentive to start pushing education on that so we can help in those aspects. And as for the drivers, they are not parking on, or whenever they stop at a red light, they're on the crosswalks.
Thank you for your comments today.
And lastly, Michael Looney.
Morning. Michael Looney, SMD Five, Vice President of Economic Development with the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce. Just want to give a quick update. The news has been ripe with information about the new Amazon facility, which is set to open, it's set to open on December the 5th. I'm not sure if they're going to be a little bit before that or a little bit after that, but that's the target date. 52,000 square foot, I'm sorry, 35,000 square foot facility that is on, it's at 3850 Venture Drive. If you want to drive by it, you can go check it out. They are sitting on a 12-acre site. That was a project that took about one year to complete, very quick project. They're very happy with San Angelo. We've gotten really good feedback from the company and from their development branch, DevCo. They're going to be looking for between 150 to 200 employees. They are currently hiring now. If anybody is interested, they can go to the Amazon website and you just look up San Angelo because they have a jobs posting page. It might be listed as WTX9, or it may just say San Angelo. So anyway, just wanted to give a quick update on that. We do have that posted on my LinkedIn site and Facebook site, so there's a link where you can go. If you're interested in a job, they're going to be looking for drivers, people to work in the actual facilities, pickers, sorters, managers, just a whole spectrum of different types of employees. So a good opportunity for San Angelo. We're very pleased with it. They're very pleased with us, and just wanted to give you that quick update. Thank you.
With that, we will now move into our consent agenda. I'll start with Larry. Is there an item you'd like to pull, Larry? Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
Nothing to pull, ma'am.
I'm going to pull item G. Harry?
Nothing to pull.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
All right. May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item G?
So move.
So moved by Harry, seconded by Larry. Any public comment concerning any item on the consent agenda at this point? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda passes six to zero. We will go to item G, Consider a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager and Chief of Police to Negotiate and Execute All Necessary Documents to Establish a Law Enforcement Mutual Aid Task Force. Craig, you are on.
Morning, Mayor, council.
Good morning. I just want you to explain what this is so the public's aware of what a law enforcement mutual aid task force is all about.
Yes, ma'am. This is going to allow the city manager to go into talks and work on an MOU between our agency, the Sheriff's Department, and DPS to consolidate our resources to fight the narcotic epidemic in this city. So our work is not siloed. We'll consolidate it, share intelligence, share resources to fight the problem. That's...
Very good.
It's really good stuff. I feel it's going to really benefit this community.
It's a great idea. Do I have questions from other council members for more information? No? That was short and sweet. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Move approval, ma'am. Move approval.
Thank you, Tommy.
Second.
Seconded by Lucy. Public comment. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, it passes six to zero. We will now move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. A is Consider Approving Tier's Incentive Requests for the Falling Items. North Tier's Private Project located at 2505 Martin Luther King Boulevard totaling $75,000. Two, North Tier's Private Project located at 323 West 26th Street totaling $75,000. And then three, the South Tier's Tax Reimbursement for the property at 109 South Chabern Street for a total of five years for approximately $52,000. Erin, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Valenzuela, Erin Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This morning, we have some tiers incentives in the north for private projects as well as a tax reimbursement in the south. So here is our funding right now for the north. You can see that we're right at $2 million of available funding in the north. We had two projects that came forward to the tiers board in October. They talked about the two projects, one at 2105 MLK and then 323 West 26th. Both of the requests were for $75,000. So with that, $150,000 should be an extra zero there, not just $150, but $150,000. That would bring that funding...
I'm not even sure that's $150 because that's a comma, not a period. But it's some number.
It's some number. Yes, ma'am. But we are confident that is a $150,000 request. Tiers Board did recommend both, and that would put us at 1.892,459. So let's get into the individual projects. So this request, their proposed total projects is $82,500 with the funding request of $75,000, their 10% match of $8,500. The summary of the work, actually, that should be $7,500. $7,500.
Numbers are, you know, a little shady today.
Numbers are challenging today. My goodness. But their project is grading and parking, fencing, a fenced mural, and signage. And we've got some images here. So as you can see, this is Martin Luther King right here. This is at 26th. There's a kind of a large drive right there that does not have curbing. They're looking to close that off with curbing to allow the water to flow to the south as it's trying to get across, going back to the west, back to the Concho River across Bryant. So they have a lot of water flow that comes in here, and this area that's right in here is mostly gravel that you can see. It's not really improved. So they're looking at improving that to allow the water to flow better to go back to the south going downhill. You also can see here that it comes in and kind of goes into their property back here, which can be problematic for them as the back part of their property is much lower than the front. And so they're really just trying to channelize that stormwater runoff that goes down Martin Luther King as opposed to coming into their property off of Martin Luther King and the north part of the Martin Luther area.
You might mention that's the Chicken Farm.
That is the Chicken Farm Art Center, a great project for our community that's been around for a few years, and now we have new owners that are wanting to continue its success and continue its vitality here in this part of town. But here in the front, I'm going to go back just a second. You can kind of see the multicolored fencing back here. They're looking at kind of changing that up just a little bit, giving something that gives a little more security and privacy for different events that happens back there. But still, just a kind of a more different, instead of going vertical, they're going to go horizontal. They're going to continue to do some mural and some art things along there to highlight that it is an art center, multiple little shops back in the area. They are looking at doing this kind of mural and sign that has been a... Some of their artwork has been reflective of that sculpturing, and so they're looking at doing that sculpture there and placing that. So it's kind of a wayfinding spot for people to find the location on MLK. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions on this project. This project did get recommended approval by tiers board with a five to zero vote, as well as staff. And we have the option, Mayor, to either take these one at a time or go through all three, and then I'll make a decision at the end on all three.
Assume one at a time and approve.
Okay. So this one is recommended at that $75,000 of a private incentive for their project.
Any questions for Erin? May I have a motion for approval?
I'm going to...
Okay, Karen and Lucy are joint in this deal, so we've got a motion and a second.
And there is a public comment?
Yes.
Yes. For Justin in Chastity Oaks? You don't want to make your comment? Okay.
Okay. With that, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mayor. The second project is at 323 West 26th Street. It has a funding request of the $75,000 and an estimated project of $102,000.
Would you like me to read the numbers today?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll help out on that if I need to.
You are very good at numbers. I apparently am not very good at numbers today. I apologize. The proposed match is the $25,000, and you can see that in the north...
That says $27,000, but...
What did I say?
You said $25,000, but...
Can I get a left-hander up here, anyone? We need to sub in. So you can see that our minimum match is a 10% match, but in this case, they're actually doing a 26.5% match because of the cost of the project. So this is higher than normal, and that normally rates higher on our level of what we would support. So they're looking at a repair and replacement of a facade and roof and gutters of a facility that's a leased facility that they own, but they're wanting to do some improvements to make the property more attractive. So this is 26th right here. This is MLK right here. This is, these are the facilities right there, and we'll show you the new front. You can see here, it used to be a site for kind of some industrial stuff. The new owners have it, and they're looking at trying to revitalize it. It is a large property. I'm not doing that. All right.
Notice.
So maybe it's not me with the numbers.
Yeah.
But this property here... But this property here that you can see from the street, a, a very good solid property, a good property that could be leased for multiple things. They've got some long-term vision, but their first step is kind of to phase this in and to get the facade. They have a great vision for the facade. I think that's a dramatic improvement of that facility. Could be used in multiple ways, could be retail, it could be an event center, and it could still continue to be some of the heavy commercial items that if somebody wanted to come in and lease the property, they could. And so I think that's a, a, a beautiful aftershot of what they're looking to do. They know this is step one. They know they have multiple steps in the future to make it even a better facility. With that, the recommendation from the tiers board was a, a split vote of four to three, and I'll explain that in just a moment. The staff does recommend approval for that. The reason for the split vote is, and I'm gonna go back to the overhead. So right here is the, the Chicken Farm Art Center. The property owners are the same, and they were struggling a little bit of, well, the same property owners, and if we're giving funding to here and to here, is that more funding than deserved? But they are separate properties. They are separate entities of what they're wanting to do. Now, there may come a time in the future, somewhere down the road, in a phasing plan, if there's somebody from the Chicken Art Farm Center that wants to utilize this as maybe a venue space, that may be. But right now, it is a leased space for someone to come in and lease independently. They're not necess, they're not tied together with the Chicken Art Farm Art Center. So that's where the split vote came from.
Well, historically, we have had a property owner come forward for a request of seventy-five thousand, and then the next year, they have a new project on the same property, and we've approved that. So, I don't see a reason to not support this because they truly are two separate properties. And if you look at what we've done in the past, we've given certain property development, one or two or three opportunities to apply to improve a single property at a single address. So I don't think this is going against tradition in terms of what we've done. I believe that we all believe that this portion, this particular area of San Angelo can use any development ideas and improvement in terms of facades, et cetera. I hope that the money that is right now projected to create the facade that was just shown is enough money. It seems like a dramatic difference, but if a hundred and twenty thousand can do that, go for it. Other questions or comments?
I move to approve.
Lucy moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Karen. Public comment. Is there any public comment? With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero.
Thank you ma'am. This last one is a, I would say, fairly unique request. Within the tiers policies, there are the private incentives, and then there's also the ability to get a tax reimbursement that's above and beyond that private incentive. That is a request that's before us today for this project at one oh nine South Chaburn in the tiers south. To give you just a little bit of history, and I'll give you some images in just a moment. This is a project that's a two-story building. First story is retail. They received a, a grant, I don't, I think it was around sixty-eight thousand. That was at a time that the south didn't, wasn't able to fund the full seventy-five thousand for a fire suppression system for the first floor. They've received a facade grant at a later time period for seventy-five thousand that they're in the process of working through now, in, in the goal of making second-floor lofts, living spaces on the second floor of that structure. This here is a tax reimbursement where they would still pay their city taxes, and then the tiers fund would then reimburse out of the tiers fund this approximately fifty-two thousand one hundred and five dollars. You can see currently, right now, with, without our new allocation to the south tiers, this is not our new funding allocation, but what we ended the year with was three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. There are fifty-two thousand, which we would go ahead and encumber that entire amount for the five years. We'd go in and encumber it in the account, would bring us back down to two hundred and sixty-four. And again, that is before our current fiscal year allocation for our south tiers funds. So here is that property that you can see is a two-story building. You can see here on the left kind of what it looks like today. The bottom picture there is what they want it to go and look towards. They're gonna add an, an extra staircase to meet some egress items. They've got the facade that's been approved and has been approved for funding, and they're going to start working towards that. So here's kind of what the breakdown is. Within our policies, it says a, and a person must invest more than seven hundred and fifty, fifty thousand dollars in the property to be eligible for this tax reimbursement. Well, through what they're doing with the appraised value, after the investment that they do with the five hundred thousand dollars, or with the one point seven that they do, they are going to be investing a total of two point two million dollars into the total project to get the lofts, and again, getting somebody into the retail space again in, in the bottom. So that's the total investment that they are making into the property. So what we have here, you can see the five years that we have there and our current city tax rate. And then, under the tiers formula, it shows that we would go down, we would start breaking that down with a hundred percent down to sixty percent over the five years. And that's where we get the estimated fifty-two thousand one hundred and five. The variables in this are that tax rate, and we tend to lock it in at the appraised value, and so that what we really are looking at is what does that tax rate do to that reimbursable number. That's why we put the approximate fifty-two thousand one hundred and five dollars.
Is that city and county tax?
It is only city. It is not county, and it is not the school district. It is just city.
I'm just gonna say the fine. I fi, I have a problem with it even being eligible. This is separate from this request, so it's just a comment. The whole idea behind tiers is tax increment refinanced zone, which means increased evaluations goes to create the fund. And now we're giving money out of it to pay for taxes when the whole purpose behind the program is property taxes.
Ma'am.
It's a policy, I get it. But I think that policy needs to be re-looked at because the whole idea behind it is property tax. If we start giving everybody back property tax that creates that fund, I think that's an issue.
It, it can be, and I think the, the goal of the overall project is the long-term, as you know. It's, and so does this make a significant impact? Now, again, this is a, a rare instance, and but, like you've mentioned before, you do it once, that means it could happen again. And so I think if that's a direction the city council would like us to look at that policy with the tiers board, we would be happy to do that.
I think you should re-look at it. On the other hand, I'm also gonna say, I'm thrilled with what I see. I'm thrilled with the investment and the vision that they have for this property. So, because it is part of what you can do, I think it has to be approved, in my opinion, because you can't not do it if it allows it. And furthermore, the investment they're gonna make, the, the entire project will be beneficial to downtown, and it's a very positive investment. And how could one not support their vision?
Yes ma'am.
That's my comment. Other comments from council? Then may I have a motion for approval?
So move.
Moved by Harry, seconded by Tommy. Public comment. We'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Item B, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z two four dash one four. A request for a zone change from the single-family residential zoning district to low-rise multifamily zoning district for properties located on block five-three of Lasker's Edition. And Aaron, you're on. Again, are there any numbers on this presentation? Because we need to be aware ahead of time.
Before I answer, I might wanna look. Thank you ma'am, city council, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. Here we have a small rezoning to create some infill housing. This is the Lasker's Edition, block fifty-three, lots thirteen through twenty. You can see right here is Chaburn and Twenty-Fourth. Right here is a church that's been vacant for about three to four years. We have a person or a group that's actually coming in and wants to make some apartments out of the church, utilize the, the structure of the church, but then go in and, and put it into apartments. They also has, and you can just barely see it right there, is a parsonage that they're gonna go in and split into a duplex. At the time, our staff looked at this and said, well, it really makes sense to go ahead and, and do that to, because of the connection to Chaburn, and then this being neighborhood, that that's a pretty good transition through there. And I'll show you some more slides on that. So this is general, um, commercial, heavy commercial currently, and single-family residential, and we are wanting to go to the RM one low-rise multifamily. It's in SMD number four, Ms. Lucy Gonzalez, and in the Reagan neighborhood. You can see here that transition here on the left with the vision plan of Chaburn being a commercial corridor, and this over here between Chaburn and MLK being a neighborhood. And so, doing some low-rise multifamily through here, which RM one allows multiple housing types from single-family duplexes, townhomes, as well as low, low-rise multifamily, that allows multiple structure types. So that's kind of important to this. And then you see here, where most of that is RS one now, there's a few vacant lots there that have not been built. And so this would allow them to be built, and being RM one, they could stay a single-family house if they chose to, or they could do a duplex or something else that's a little more dense in that area. This did go to the planning commission. They did recommend approval with a five-zero vote to rezone this area to RM one zoning district from the general commercial, heavy commercial. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Lucy, do you wanna make any comment?
Um, the only comment that I have to make is that, you know, housing is good, especially for the city. So when we can find these places or areas that we can build, and not only that, but that they've been vacant for a while now, and we can get them back on the tax roll, I think that's a great thing. So I move to approve as presented.
Are there any other questions or comments before we have a second? Larry seconded. Public comment? With none, we will now, yes, well, you have to sign up to make public comment. So with that, we'll take a vote. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. We'll move to item C. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance from PD two four dash oh five. A request to rezone the Crosswinds subdivision approximately twenty-two point eight seven six acres off of Houston Hart Freeway and, and Drive to a planned development with an underlying zoning of RS dash three, and also allow single-family and two-family residential with modified setbacks.
Thank you ma'am, city council, and Mr. Valenzuela, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is a cleanup of a case that came before the city council in 2022. There was an intent at that time for the developer that was not sure exactly how, what the housing market was going to be by the time they were ready to get started. They had requested two-family housing at the time, but the, the report did not get written that way. And so this is a cleanup to come back and write the report so that does include the, the two-family housing structure type as a potential for this. So you can see the property here just south of Houston Hart. This is the St. John's Campus. This is the Quicksand Golf Course. So it's, it's bracketed by Pulliam, Smith, and Houston Hart. And it is just kind of this, the south Paul and neighborhood, and so an area that's really ripe for redevelopment. Still a large lot, but it is an infill development area, we believe. So this acreage is about twenty-three acres. The vision plan is neighborhood, and we are going to an RS three underlying with, which will also allow the single-family and two-family housing structure types. But here you can see what the vision plan was previously. It was commercial. It has not developed commercially. We actually are, and you can see on the right side, that division of where the planned development would be. They are still keeping the frontage commercial. And what we've been learning over the last six months to twelve months is that the more rooftops you have, the more chance you have of getting some small commercial coming in. And so we're wanting to get rooftops in there so that we can have a little bit of commercial, because Paul and is a little short on general commercial type activities. So here are those development standards that are within the PD. They would have a minimum lot size of five thousand. They could have a minimum lot size of fifty by one hundred. They could have a lesser front yard setback. Instead of twenty-five, they would have twenty. They would have an interior side yard of five. The double frontage, which this project only has two double, just a few double frontages, they would actually have a five-foot side yard because they're going to face the front of their house, the same as every, all the other houses on the block. And then they would have a rear yard setback of fifteen instead of the regular twenty. The floor area ratio is currently for RS three is point six. They've asked for a point seven, which means they could have seventy percent floor area ratio, floor area ratio to lot coverage. What this means, they could still have maybe a smaller lot, but they could go two-story and be a little larger. Their intent right now is to do some duplexes. They're probably gonna mix in some single-family. They may do something, something else with a few of the lots, but it's really to provide some opportunities for our community to find houses that fits the market and be able to move with the market as it moves. And so, we've been very, we're trying to become more flexible in our planning and our zoning rules to how do we make this work for our developers that may have to change within six months of what they thought the housing market was going to do six months ago. Six months later may change, and we still need housing in our community, and we believe this is a way to help that.
Particularly in certain neighborhoods and certain price points.
Yes ma'am. So with that, this did go to the planning commission. They did recommend a, an approval with a five-zero vote, and city staff is recommending approval to change the PD to allow the RS three underlying zoning, which would also allow the single-family and two-family housing structure types with those development standards that were in exhibit B of the adopting ordinance.
Lucy?
Again, I think this is a great idea. We already approved it once, so we're just, like you said, we're fixating it. So I move to approve as presented.
Second.
A second by Harry. Public comment. With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero.
This is a hearing show.
It is. Alright, item D. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance for PD two four dash oh six. A request for a zone change at the Village East Retirement Community from the general heavy commercial zoning district to a new planned development district with a base zoning of low-rise multifamily, modifying setbacks and lot sizes, and allowing accessory uses for a retirement community. Aaron, you are on.
Thank you ma'am, city council, Mr. Valenzuela, again, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is a, a PD to come into conformance with a plat that we have approved conditionally for this PD. There are three properties here that you can see that are considered what we call Village East. They are built out. They are not, this is not new construction. This is not redevelopment. They are built out. So we have the larger property that's about six acres, the smaller property just over two acres, and this property that's just right at four acres, for the total of the twelve point six eight nine acres. It's a request to approve a planned development with the underlying zoning of RM one. And this really is low-rise multifamily, happens to be senior housing for a program that Village East operates. This is in SMD number five, Karen Hesse-Smith and the Vista de la Royal neighborhood. You can see, our vision plan saw this area back in two thousand that this would turn commercial. Well, there are some commercial areas over here that are closer to Knickerbocker, but these clearly are residential and are gonna stay residential. You can see that we had general commercial and a couple of PDs for these three properties, but now we're just gonna consolidate them and make them work together all as, as one unit. I, I really wanna comment on this saying that one of our planners, Austin Reed, Mr. Gully with SKG, and Mr. Dyson with our legal team, really worked through this big chart to fit what's there. They did a great job of working and making sure that everything is within the right standards that we put in here so that we can move forward, and they don't have any hiccups along the way.
You wanna talk about the overriding reason we're doing this?
Yes ma'am, I can. So the overriding reason is, these are senior housing. There's been a, a decision through a different authority, through the tax authority, not through the city, or the county, or the state, that has said, they, they cannot use their homestead exemptions and other tax exemptions. This has then, we've gone through and made a subdivision, making each property, each housing unit, an individual lot. Now we're gonna match the planned development to allow the zoning to each of those lots, to have that move forward. That allows the people that are living in those homes to utilize their, their tax exemptions, as, as I understand it. What we're doing...
But they have been climbing those tax exemptions in the past.
Yes ma'am, I believe that is correct. Yes, ma'am, I believe that is correct. You don't want to get me started on numbers.
Yeah, we don't. They're not going to ask anything with the number in it.
So that, that is the reason that we've come forward and that's where the homework came in with those folks, looking at these, what makes sense, what works for this established development that's already there. And so we went through, we made those, these recommendations. It did go to the planning commission. They did approve the, the plats. They did approve this planned development with a five to zero vote. The plat is working through the agreement process to get filed and then once it's filed and the zoning is approved, then they will be able to move forward with their, their goals.
So the corporation that in the past owned these, if you will?
Yes, ma'am.
Has the legal paperwork been adjusted to accommodate this?
They, they are working through that right now and they're working with Mr. Dyson to get the agreement done so they can get the plats signed and filed with the county so they can move forward. But yes, they are working through that process now.
Okay. Questions from Council Karen?
No, I would just like to thank Mr. Dyson and the other parties that worked diligently to see that this community could preserve their various tax exemptions. That was important to a lot of us. We had private meetings about it because, because we felt it was a, an issue of great importance and so I'm gratified to see it come to pass. Thank you.
There are going to be a motion with that?
Ma'am?
Yes, make a comment. Go ahead, first of all. Harry then Larry. Harry then Larry.
Very good. I just want to say that this is only one of four properties that have these issues and so the other three properties are probably going to be working with Erin and Brandon to try to get a similar resolution. Each property is a little different, so you can't blanket everything, but I think what you're going to see is Rio Concho West, the patio homes at Rio Concho East, and eventually Baptist Memorial Houses, their cottages. So this is not the last time we're going to see something very similar to this, anyway.
Larry?
One of the items that came up, and I believe we have clarified, but I just want to make a matter of, there was discussion of rerouting of utility lines and I believe the, the position we came to was that would not occur.
Correct. That is part of the agreement that they're working through that our executive director of public works has made the determination that that does not need to take place at this time and so it's going to be a deferral to a future date if there's anything that ever dissolves with the corporation, but at this time, they're not going to be extending any utilities. So just to kind of clarify what I said is in the plat process, each lot is supposed to have its own utilities. While this is already built out, our subdivision ordinance doesn't really take that into account other than having the executive director of public works, Mr. Kelton, make a determination that, okay, at this time, that's not needed and we can work that into a deferral agreement because what we don't want to do is encumber future taxpayers of trying to provide some kind of infrastructure, but that's, that's the protections that they're working through.
I'd also like to second the conversations about the cooperation. That was absolutely incredible to get all those parties together to come up with the best possible answer. Thank you.
With that, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Karen is seconded by Lucy. Any public comment? With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. There's no closed session today and so we'll move to item eight on the agenda, which is follow-up and administrative issues. There was no executive session, so nothing to discuss there. Is there any announcements in consideration of future agenda items? Seeing none?
Yes, I believe that we wanted to look at council dates for December and January due to the holidays. Normal scheduled meetings would be December 3rd and December 17th, but we wanted to see if council wanted to possibly alter those or consolidate down to one meeting as has been done in the past quite frequently.
Think we need to leave them as they are? It's totally confusing.
Mayor, by may, I know that we had a meeting, I had a meeting with others as well. The first meeting in December, actually, there's like, I think, four items on there.
But how do we know all of that right now?
It's, we have a hold on, on items that have been submitted that'll be on city council and typically they stay around that range anyway, so it's going to be a very light schedule for, for the first meeting in December.
Is there any reason if we postpone that meeting or don't have that meeting, that somebody will get hung up with us not being able to pass something?
Let's get Erin up here as well to make sure that we're clear on that.
Let's be really clear on that. Because we're going to have second readings. So when are the second readings expected?
The second readings will be on December the 3rd and we do have one item that we will talk about in December, that is the moratorium on the sign ordinance. And I'm going to look at Mr. Dyson and say, I believe we have to have two readings on that because it is an ordinance to postpone that ordinance and that would be the reason. It expires at the end of December, but again, I, I understand Mr. Valenzuela that it is, there's not a whole lot of items on there, so it would be assured.
But are there items that have to be considered based off of second readings?
The three items that we just approved today.
Yes, so.
Stay incorrect, Mayor, so.
Yes, thank you. All right, with that, we'll leave December the 3rd and December 17th as planned. Anything else?
The same, staff had the same concerns for January's meetings.
I think we leave them as it is for right now. All right, with that, may I have an, may I have a motion for adjournment? Lucy said let's adjourn. Who seconds that?
Second.
Seconded by Tommy. Any public comment or question about whether we should adjourn or not? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. We are officially adjourned.